Oh, early we see. Yeah, that's fine. Cool. Thanks.
Yeah, right. She's sitting next to me. I see yours. There you. So I ran out. I used to. What am I? I can't. It is great. After three months of my.
My office? I haven't been there.
In the. Oh, in the.
Supposed to get just a regular brown.
Oh, the toxins out of air.
Plus you did it. Well, she barbecued this probably.
No, the funny thing is my sister. Once you've cut an onion, once you've cut it.
Whatever you would like, ma'am. Okay? And we're doing manual.
Because of Larry. Well, I'll go ahead and bring this, uh, meeting of the planning commission to order. First, uh, order of business is a roll call.
Thank you. Chair Wilson.
President.
Vice Chair Kerth.
Here.
Commissioner Huber and Commissioner Porter are absent. Commissioner Du.
President.
Thank you.
All right. Our first order is the invocation and a pledge of allegiance. I'll be doing the invocation and Commissioner Kerth will be doing the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Our first order of business, approval of minutes from our May thirteenth, two thousand fifteen meeting.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the first? Oh, thank you. Um, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, if you wish to speak to any, uh, matters before the commission, please fill out a white card and give it to the secretary, please. All right. We are moving agenda item number one to the last item on our list for today. So we're going to open with agenda item number two.
Thank you Chairman Wilson, fellow commissioners. Item number two is case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 twelve. It is a tentative parcel map to allow for the creation of two parcels from one existing parcel with an environmental exemption. This is located at one seven zero four three D Street. Um, this is the home of Joey's Auto Repair and Johnny's Radiator Shop. There's currently one parcel. They wish to split the building into two. Um, there currently is a demising wall that separates the two parcels. So there's not an issue from, from a building standpoint to separate the parcels. And staff is, um, conditioned for the appropriate reciprocal access agreements to be recorded with the recordation of this map. And with that, staff finds that the project meets all conditions and, um, recommends approval.
I'll go ahead and open up, uh, public comment. Ms. Carloni?
Diana Carloni, I represent Johnny's Radiator. That's Mr. Isaiah Saragundi. Uh, this, this particular project and the reason it's being slit, uh, split is a settlement of a land dispute between two owners, even though the property is in one owner's name. And this carries out a settlement agreement. So I would simply be happy to answer questions and ask for your approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Commissioner Chairman. Um, just as the applicant, like to say thank you to staff. Um, Scott Webb and, um, Joe Slakers, as well as Dave Cochrane did an excellent job in going out and visiting the site and helping us coordinate the opportunity to be able to split the map. And everything was done very efficiently. According to, um, all the development codes, we meet all the requirements and we hope to get your approval tonight. I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Actually staff. All right. Well, I'll go ahead and close public comment and move it back to the commission. Yeah, thank you. When you were interviewing or taking information from, I am assuming both parties, did you interact with both parties or just one party?
Um, the application was, uh, filed by, uh, the property owners. So we, uh, we actually have only been really dealing with the, uh, the applicant's representative. Um, so we really haven't had any dialogue with the actual owners. They were just sign, uh, giving their consent on the application itself.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now you're back. Questions? All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and make, uh, the recommendation to adopt planning commission resolution P dash fifteen dash zero two six, approving case number PLN fifteen dash zero zero one two and find that the cat, uh, project is categorically exempt under section one five three one five entitled Minor Land Divisions of the State Guidelines to Implement the California Environmental Quality Act. Second.
We have a first by Commissioner, uh, for, by the Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Du. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the project's been approved.
I'll go ahead and move to agenda item number three.
As Chairman Commissioners, agenda item number three, PLN fifteen zero fifteen. It's a tentative parcel map to create two parcels from parcel two of parcel map eighteen one 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 with an environmental exemption. It's located within the Crossroads Shopping Center at the northwest corner of Palmdale Road and Cantina Street. And the applicant's going to, uh, develop two smaller buildings rather than it's, um, one larger one. And staff recommends approval as condition. If there's any questions?
All right. I'll go ahead and open up the public comment for agenda item number three. Is anyone wish to speak to agenda item number three? None. I'll go and bring that back to the commission. No questions, Mr. Chairman.
I'll move to, uh, adopt the resolution, uh, P dash one five dash zero two three, approving case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 one five and find the project exempt under SEQA.
I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner or Vice Commissioner Kerth. A second by Chair Bob Wilson. Uh, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The project has been approved.
Move to agenda item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number four, uh, staff is requesting a continuance of this item. However, we would like to point out the, that we, um, did receive a letter of support from James Mayo. Uh, that's in your packets tonight. And also staff provided a table, uh, which gives you some of the other cities and how they regulate those, uh, uses that we're talking about. And also would like to point out for Commissioner Du, we are, uh, gathering data as well on, uh, the number of existing businesses in those other cities. Some of the other cities weren't, um, cooperating as well and making us file a public records request on, to get that information. So that's going to take a little bit longer. So actually this continuance is good for that reason as well. So.
All right. So I will go ahead and open up public comment in regards to agenda item number four. Being none, I'll go ahead and request a continuance to our July eighth meeting. Um, I did have one question though for staff. In the report, we got, um, the calls for service for the different establishments, but they're all coded and I had absolutely no idea what each one of those codes mean. If we could maybe get those would be beneficial. All right.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Oh, in reading that report, I don't recall. Analysis indicating whenever the law enforcement, when they take a call as relates to. Bureau for two deputies or fuel, I don't know how much each call, the cost analysis. I think that would be something we should consider.
That cost, cost analysis?
Every time they make a, uh, there's a call.
How much it costs for them to respond to it. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That item will be continued to the July planning commission meeting.
And now we'll move, go ahead and move back to agenda item number one.
Thank you Chairman Wilson. Item number one is case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 eleven. It is a conditional use permit modification and site plan modification to allow for changes affecting the phasing of conditions of approval for case PLN thirteen dash zero 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 one three, which is a previously approved sixty acre ten megawatt solar power generation facility on property located north of Palmdale Road, east of the logical extended, extension of Mesa Linda Avenue, south of the logical extension of Seneca Road and west of the logical extension of Topaz Road. The planning commission approved this project originally in two thousand fourteen. And since then, the, uh, project applicant has moved forward with purchasing seven of the eight parcels that were involved in the various phases. Um, in the diagram you see in front of you, uh, phase one is indicated in blue, which, um, is pretty much complete. Uh, the permits have not been finalized due to some of the outstanding conditions. Um, phase two, um, they were able to purchase all of the properties involved with the exception of the Klos property. Um, the trustee of the, uh, Klos property is actually on her way right now. I do not believe she's going to make it in time to provide testimony. Uh, she also provided a, uh, fax to us that came in, um, in fragments. So we're unable to give you the complete, uh, add-on today. Um, and with that, staff essentially is requesting a continuance on this item, uh, to provide this, um, property owner, uh, their due process and providing the information to you for consideration. Uh, we're available if you have any other questions on the other items. Um, staff in general is, is supportive of the change. Um, it's something that the applicant has the right to request. Uh, we don't think it conflicts at all, um, with the current state. In fact, if they were not able to obtain ownership of this property or a long-term lease, uh, they would not be able to build out phase two. So I think the applicants here and they can, they can speak more to that. Um, but it's something that I think they're still going to pursue. Um, but they, um, in their respect, they don't want to be held hostage, uh, from, from finalizing their phase one.
I'll go ahead and open up the public comment for agenda item number one. And it's Garrett, uh, last name?
Bean.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Garrett Bean with S-Power at, uh, Two Embarcadero, uh, San Francisco. So we've taken quite a long time working on this project. Um, working with Scott and Chris and the rest of the team to bring this project along. Um, we've obviously made a lot of progress towards everything. Um, we've been able to close on all the properties in the second phase, including two of the properties north of the fate, north of the, uh, project that were just required for improvements, um, to drainage facilities. So we really feel like we've, you know, cooperated and tried to, um, meet all the conditions of approval, um, as best as we could. However, uh, we have attempted to close on this property, uh, several times, uh, through the escrow agent that was provided by, um, the seller. Uh, then we tried to go through a different escrow agent because she had a problem with the original one. So we tried doing that. Um, she went silent for a while and to meet our conditions, um, we went through a couple, tried to do a mediation, arbitration, settle out of, um, out of court. And we've really exhausted all means possible. And this is kind of another example that we're seeing from her where there's something sent or done at the very last stage to prevent us from moving forward. Um, the reason why I would really appreciate it if you guys would consider moving forward today is because, one, we've given her all the opportunities that, um, that she's needed to comment and to move forward on this. Uh, but she's chosen not to. And secondly, we have obligations with our financiers and with our, uh, contracts with the utility to come online. And thus far, we have not been able to do that. And we're facing ongoing, um, payments in, both in attorney's fees and everything trying to clear this up and with our financing partners that expected this to be completed several months ago. So we've really done everything in our power. Um, right now, we're not asking to remove her parcel from the, uh, the phase development. Uh, we're just asking to change the, the phasing so that you don't have to acquire all of the parcels for the first phase to be completed. So we're not asking for any change to her parcel, to any entitlements on her parcel. We're just asking to look at the phasing process. Um, so with that, I'd really like to answer any questions you have. But because of our financial obligations to both our lenders and to SCE, I would request that you guys make a decision on this today.
I have a question. Just, just to be, just to be clear, um, what are you asking for today? I noticed on the, on the last go around, it said in order for the issuance of a building permit, all the parcels had to be. And that was for phase one, right?
Right.
So you got a building permit, obviously, built. Now, at this point, are we asking for a building permit for phase two? Is that what we're?
No, not ex.
What are we, what are we needing at this body tonight that's being held up by the, by the parcel in green, by the Klos property?
Staff's actually unwilling to finalize their phase one, uh, building permits until they've, they've come true to their, come, true to their, their approved conditions.
What we're trying to do is finalize phase one in the blue.
Correct. And, um, they're, they've been working with us along the way and keeping us appraised of the actions against the, the Klos property trustee. Um, we're basically trying to, they had the ability to request this modification of you. And this was the option that they, they came up with to say, okay, well, why don't we see if the planning commission would modify the condition? That way that would put, um, I guess, the Klos property out of the driver's seat. They're not basically thinking that they need this property to, to complete their, complete their, uh, construction of phase one. Um, the intent of that condition, when it was originally drafted, was to, was to restrict residential development within that area. Um, but with, with phase two off the table at this point, until they have obtained ownership, uh, there still is some larger chunks of property that could be developed as residential. Uh, what we don't want is that phase two to be built out and we still have that two and a half acre parcel that's the close, uh, Klos property that have, that hasn't been developed and could potentially develop as residential. So phase two is basically off the table. That's what they're requesting unless they get their, uh, the approval.
But phase two off the table, meaning scrap the whole thing?
No, it just means keep the entitlements there, but keep it the same where you have to acquire all the, all the parcels of phase two to build phase two. So you don't have like part of it, part of phase two built out and not. It's not really a possibility right now, the way the conditions are worded. But the way they are worded is we have to own all of the parcels in that block. So what we're saying is let's just own the parcels of our piece. And then if phase two can come to fruition later, then we would hopefully complete the purchase with, uh, the Klos property and then build out phase two. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And for staff, is that, what's, what's the negative part for the city on that proposal?
That's what I'm trying to, and what's the negative part for the Klos property? Because if you were to act with this, with, without Linda Romney being here, is she losing out on, I'm trying to come up with that. Maybe Garrett, you guys have run over this a thousand times. What?
I mean, that's really the reason why we tried to keep it the way we did is that this way she's not losing out on any entitlements. If she wanted to build residential there, then she could, but we could no longer build out any of that phase two. However, if she did want to sell property to us, uh, that property to us, then she could and we could build out phase two. So it's maintaining all of her entitlements. So that's why we're trying to preserve that. We've just, we're not able to contact her until like game time when that decision needs to be. when that decision needs to be made. This is what happened when we were, were at the arbitrations and the jud- with the judge. She didn't show up to the hearings. And then she went after hours to talk to the judge after the time had passed. So we're seeing this repetitive cycle from her, this delay tactic. I mean, it's, we just can't continue on like this.
Basically, we're just looking at finalizing phase one, no development in phase two until the Klos property is resolved.
Correct.
But phase one, but phase two does not necessarily have to be tied to phase one.
That's correct.
I'm, I'm feeling like, kinda okay with that as long as this other property owner and whatever happened is between you guys, as long as the other property owner still ad- as before this meeting, which sounds like they do, and as long as the city isn't jeopardizing...
Potential residential development is-
I kind of agree, and if, uh, she, if you were to approve the change, she could always appeal that. She could always turn around and appeal this to the council, which she could do next month, even if we waited a month, she could do that as well if you chose to move towards that.
To me, it does sound like this, this group has been working at this quite some time, and I read, I read all the letters.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not for lack of trying, and I know, you know, we don't take financial matters into consideration, but I do know that it's unfair that you have a lot of pressure.
Yeah.
And at a certain, at a certain time, something's gotta break. So as long as the city's not affected, I wouldn't mind, um, that recommendation tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, yeah? Um, I, I take it that you, you have concluded that as far as when this individual doesn't show up, it's a stalling tactic?
Mm-hmm.
That's the impression you're giving me, okay? So, one of the things that I, I feel comfortable with, um, I think she's aware of the meeting today. Um, I'm in favor of a continuance because, um, that has not been a pattern with me or my being on the commission here up this, to this point. Should that person not choose to meet next month, the next time we meet, uh, that's a different ballgame. But at this point, I don't feel quite comfortable without hearing from that person. Uh, and this is my first time, uh, presented the opportunity to, to hear from that person, so... How much of your project has been completed? If you were to say, uh, anywhere from fifty percent to a hundred, how much has been completed?
One hundred percent of the first phase has been completed.
Hundred percent?
We have been, um, ready to go for over, oh man, since around November. I'd have to look back. I think that's about right. Um, and we've been trying to work this out time and time again. Um, the reason why I don't support the continuance is because of our obligations to our contract partners, our financiers, um, that we've promised time and time again, uh, that it was gonna be online. We have not just this project tied to our financing package, but other projects. So that means if this project doesn't get approved, then it delays our other projects in San Bernardino, Lancaster, and the High Desert. So we are in a bit of a predicament before, here. Um, staff has been available for all this comment. Staff has actually received all the comments from Linda in the past and been able to go back through and sort everything out. Um, that's the reason why we've kind of come to this agreement that let's preserve those entitlements, move forward. And I would really encourage you to approve it. If there is an appeal, as Chris said, then we can take it to the City Council, and I'm okay with that because it does give us, um, you know, a, a shorter timeframe to meet our obligations. And it also will afford Linda Romney, the owner of the Klos property, the second opportunity to come to a public hearing, voice her concerns, um, and work with everyone here.
I understand that. Um, I, I want to commend you for something that you did do. Of the, you, the goal was to purchase eight properties, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so you actually obtained seven out of the eight. That's pretty high. And then with that said, you petitioned the city of Victorville to make some adjustments because of this snafu of sorts. And so that's commendable as well. Um, how many, how many years have your firm been in business?
Um, we've been operating for about seven years. Um, it was formerly Silverado Power, which we started out working with Scott about four years ago. Uh, we merged with S-Power, who's been in operation, uh, longer than that and has been in the energy business for over twenty years.
And in, in those amount of years, you've ran across individuals that weren't... You go into agreement, something falls apart. So this is not the first time you've seen this, right?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But I will say that this is probably the most, one of the most difficult owners that we've had to deal with thus far. We've tried to resolve it ten different ways, on ten different occasions, legally, personally, and we just haven't been able to come to any sort of agreement. When we do come to an agreement, it's backed out of, and that's really the problem.
But you are making some progress up to this point. Um...
I'd say we haven't made any progress over about the last five months just because of what's gone on. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, Garrett, oh, sorry. Can I, um, continue? So you're, the financing that you're asking about isn't so that you can build phase two because you still won't be able to build ph- phase two. It's tied to the completion of phase one.
Right. So we have obligations with our financing parties, um, to come online and essentially obtain our certificate of occupancy. So we meet all of those conditions so they can finish funding it. So-
The, the project's been done in providing electricity, but it hasn't been finalized.
But it, but it cannot be funded along with some of our other projects because it's in a, a package, uh, with the banks, essentially.
Any other questions?
Oh, the door opened? Oh, somebody left? No. It's probably Stuart.
I'll go ahead and, uh, I'll go ahead and close public comment then. Bring it back to the commission. So just for clarification, we're looking at if we were to move forward tonight, if this only affects phase one, has no effect on phase two because there still would need to acquire the Klos property in order to move forward with phase two?
That is correct. There's also a component regarding the Palmdale Road improvements. And, um, Garrett's correct when he says they're a hundred percent complete. I would just like to add, with the exception of those Palmdale Road improvements, that they're still working with Caltrans and, uh...
And that was the extension from two to three years?
Correct. And that's still gonna be tied to phase one. So regardless of phase two, if that comes to fruition, uh, the Palmdale Road improvements are still tied to phase one.
Okay.
Um, to, make a motion to approve as the applicant has requested, and as I had stated, if I made that motion, would it basically just be paragraph number two, staff recommendation? Would that be appropriate?
That is correct.
I, I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Make a motion, uh, to find that the project previously environmentally assessed and adopt conditional use permit resolution P dash fifteen dash zero one two, attachment D in the staff report, and adopt site plan residue, resolution P fifteen dash zero two five, attachment E in the site plan, therefore, modifying the conditions of approval of the original solar facility as discussed in this staff report.
And I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a, a, a motion by, uh, Vice Chair Kerth and a second by Chair Wilson to approve, um, item number one. And I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Do, I'll make that note. With the majority being heard, that item has been approved. And the applicant will be advised of, uh, uh, appeal timeframes. Thank you.
Alright. Uh, in compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for the members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that fall within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of time your comments to three minutes. None? Close public comment. Item number five, the, uh... Snowline Joint Unified School District, um, facilities need analysis. Comment on that?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Uh, there's now an opportunity to, uh, have a presentation and reports by commission members. Commissioner Do?
Um, I, recently, I, um, over the weekend, I had attended, um, a meeting and I was, um, asked about the river bottom. And, um, there were a few people, out of twenty people, I would say maybe three people had concerns that, um, the city of Victorville had little compassion, um, for those, uh, individuals. And I gave them information, which I was privy to regarding the criminality that occurred there, being unsafe, uh, for certain individuals. And I told them, uh, the types of, uh, incidents that occurred, which a number of them were alarmed by that. So, uh, it's not like, um, the city of Victorville, um, has no compassion for people who are homeless. It's just that homelessness is a very challenging pro- um, problem. And as such, I've never known anything that was complex to be resolved with a civil solution, you know, a simple solution. It always require a comprehensive approach. Um, and the things that we're about to face as relates to various businesses that are considered to be problematic, that too requires a comprehensive approach. And, um, I look forward to that dialogue when we have that to address and send it forward to the City Council. I think positions such as Planning Commission, board members, City Council, I consider that the public always have expectations and individuals such as ourselves have responsibilities. I think that's what sets us apart. And so with their interests, uh, we try to find ways of making life better. But I know of no priority far more important than safety. And since, um, um, those type challenges present us as relates to safety for every person, it's quite a challenge, so... Um, I enjoy working with my colleagues and I look forward to the next meeting. I think we are making progress. I think we're in a state of correction as well as making, uh, the city of Victorville more prosperous and, and for everyone, so... It's, uh, it's never gonna be easy, but, uh, you can't please everyone. But nevertheless, we'd, I believe we do good work here. And that's what impressed me.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just tack on to the, there is a riverbed cleanup, uh, this Saturday. Uh, if you'd like to participate Saturday morning, uh, till the noon. And it would give you an opportunity to see what kind of dangers, Mr. Do, some of the dangers that Mr. Do is talking about in terms of the amount of trash, the waste, um, hazardous waste that's generated, the drug waste, the weapons, the, it's, it's a complete disaster in the riverbed, um, after the, they move the homeless out, so... It's gonna be a huge task to clean it up and it starts on Saturday.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, um, thanks for those comments, Commissioner Do, and... Also on that note too, I realized, you know, this agenda item nof- number four with the code amendment, you know, various code amendments specifically the pro- problematic uses. Um, I just wanted to thank everyone from the staff. You guys did a lot of work on that one, a lot of research, a lot of police reports, a lot of other cities, even the stuff we received tonight. You know, somebody had to research all of that, and that is, you know, that's the kind of information that really, especially something as difficult as, as this helps a commission, I think, wrap their arms around it if you even can.
Yeah.
Which I, I actually haven't yet. I'm kinda gl- you know, I, I di- I, I just don't feel really... Other, so that's why I was really looking forward to having a full commission to be able to debate.
Yeah. I'm right there with you. I read it and reread it, and it was like, kept going back and forth.
I, I don't think I've polled as many people that I know on any item ever since I've been doing this. I'm still nowhere near. And actually, I think I'm gonna be gone next month too.
Oh.
Yeah, um, I, it looks like, um, it looks like, uh, going up to Oregon is gonna be confirmed for right at that time. And I, I thought I might've made it back the day. It looks like I'm gonna be staying a few more days. Think I'll be postponed again for me, or if you just wanna do it because I'm gonna be a troublemaker?
You'll be a, you'll be a troublemaker, I know.
I'll leave that up to you guys.
Alright. And I have nothing, so I will go ahead and, uh, close this meeting and continue it to our July eighth, two thousand fifteen. Thank you.